Is that fast? We have a little bit of time left until it's official, so we'll give Mr. Brandstad just a moment. He's not, he's not far. We'll talk about that. Yeah, I was a big N O, but I can't speak on behalf of the whole group, so we'll talk about it tonight. Mr. Brandstad, come on in. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this Monday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. We have three items for discussion tonight. The first is the review of the second quarter two thousand and twenty four police report. And tonight, we're pleased to have our Police Chief Patrick Smith. He will present a brief overview of the second quarter two thousand and twenty four police report. Welcome, Chief. Thank you, thank you for coming.
So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Today, I just wanted to come to you and go over the second quarter for the Police Department. As we, as we move through this, you'll see some of the changes that we've made and also the impact of, of your support as for the Police Department. I apologize, the thing is right behind you, so if I'm looking at you, it's not, I'm looking at you, I'm looking beyond you. So during this timeframe, this is, the first slide goes into our calls for service. As you can see, a slight decrease of minus eight percent, eight point eight percent in our calls for service during the second quarter of this year. Although it is an increase from the previous quarter, our yearly stats show a decrease overall for the number of calls for service placed at South Sound nine one one and officer stops. The number of arrests for the Police Department did increase as we increased our enforcement. As you can see, straight across the board, there's been an increase from two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty four. We attribute those numbers to the additional officers that we've placed in the city and also the increase in calls for service and the additional arrest. Although our felony arrests are down fourteen percent, our overall arrests are up twelve percent and our gross misdemeanors are up six point seven percent and twenty six and twenty five percent for misdemeanor and our warrants. So the officers are very active in the community, making the appropriate arrest and taking those into custody where responsible.
Question on that slide before we proceed.
Yes, sir.
So great news, in my opinion, that felonies are down. It's also interesting news that arrests for gross misdemeanors and misdemeanors are up. My question on that is, are we able or do we have the ability to track through our own municipal court system, the accountability for the increased arrests? Because one would presume that there would be an increased amount of prosecutions based upon the arrests and outcomes for accountability for the community based upon arrests, prosecutions, and perhaps whatever happens, fines, forfeitures, or some sort of restitution for the community.
So that's, that's a larger picture for, for us. We don't necessarily track the prosecutions. That's usually done through the courts and also maybe at the city attorney's side. But because they go to different places, our felonies go to different places than our misdemeanors. And we do have the information available and we can come back with that information, but that's not something that we normally track on a daily, weekly, monthly basis.
Completely understood. I'm just thinking more of a holistic sort of executive team, you know? How are we faring in the accountability piece? Because you're doing your work by doing the good work on the ground that is resulting in increased arrests in certain areas. Now, it's just kind of up to the rest of us to see how we fare in holding folks accountable for the crimes that you've arrested them for.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brandstad.
Chief, I think that in the future, if you were going to refine this chart in some way, that the number of arrests of people who were residents as opposed to outsiders, I five travelers, people from neighboring communities that committed things here. Don't know what those numbers would look like, but they may be interesting and they suggest something to us to do that. And, and, and am I right that these don't include juveniles that were detained that were put into the system in other ways?
These are, this, this should include all arrests. We do have separate stats for our juveniles and our juvenile arrest and prosecution. So the latter slides will kind of tell you that the, the vast majority of, of the arrests made are, are typically of residents because many of the ones fall within the domestic violence category. And those are usually folks who were responding to their home or boyfriend-girlfriend type of, of incident. And so there are other arrests that, that we also make. So some of the misdemeanor warrants and also the other warrants at the bottom are, are basically, as you mentioned, come from our courts. We follow up on those who were arrested and/or prosecuted and those who failed to appear. So we do follow up on those cases to make the appropriate arrest when necessary. And our crimes against, against persons, we've come a very long way. In our, our crimes against persons, as, as you know, we were up in a number of categories last time. We have used the, our detectives have used the Flock system effectively to follow up on crimes and also to resolve incidences where we had absolutely nothing. As you can see, the, although it shows that we're down point two percent in the various categories, our ag assaults are down twelve point five percent, which is very unusual. Usually, we're, we're up in the aggravated assault. Our simple assaults is what's, has been driving, driving us as far as things are concerned. Our homicides, as you can see, we're down sixty percent. Our robberies are down twenty five percent and our sex crimes are down forty one percent. So in, in most of areas of crime here, we're, we showing a decrease overall in our activity as well as our major crimes within the city as far as this relates to crimes against person. You can see that as in twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, at the bottom right, we did not go up significantly since two thousand and twenty three. It's only about two crimes as it relates to those areas. As far as our property crime is concerned, this has been our, our main driver and one of our main focuses. We are showing a thirty five percent decrease overall. As we see the comparison in the lower right, you'll see a big drop of almost one thousand crimes as relates in these areas. That's a thousand less victims almost within the community. Our burglaries are down twenty one percent. Our fraud is down eleven point seven percent. Our motor vehicle theft is down sixty seven percent. Our larceny is one point eight percent. Our property, stolen property is down thirty four percent. Our vandalism, forty percent, and our weapons, weapon law violations, thirty three percent. So overall, we're, we're showing great decreases in a lot of these areas. Some of the strategies that we have implemented and placement of, of our, our flock has helped us tremendously. And we're hoping to see greater reductions in the latter half as we include additional, expand the system within the city.
Question on that?
Yes, sir.
First of all, a comment, fabulous news and congratulations to all members of the department for their effort collectively in making this happen. So looking at larceny, we've had some conversations with the retail folks and I assume that that's the bucket of issues involved in larceny, right? Most of shoplifting, I would presume. So are there strategies that we're noodling over with the Retail, Retail Trade Association that might help us get that down similarly significantly over the next year?
You know, that is, that is our goal. The main challenge that we have is cooperation. A lot of, for some reason, a lot of the businesses simply don't cooperate with us as far as running our, our various emphasis in the area or they'll ask us to make arrests far away from their business. And, and so that, that has been our, our biggest challenge, making the necessary partners within the, the business community that, you know, will really work with the Police Department so that we can truly impact this crime. We have a number of, there are a number of businesses that work exceptionally well with us and we go in and make probably fifteen to twenty arrests in one day as it relates to this. But then there are those that simply, you know, prefer not to, to disrupt or involve their business in any way.
Is there, is there some value in using the carrot approach to highlight some of the very successful partners and to kind of sing their praises and the impact that their partnership has had? Perhaps I might rub off on others as others see that in the community?
That, that is, that is one, one way that we tried going about that. However, I, I don't want to call any business name, but there are several of them who just simply don't want any activity around their business or don't want anything related in their business or, or disruptions, even though they're, they're showing significant losses. Each, each month, we do a top ten list of businesses for our, our officers to show the number of calls for service, the number of things that are happening, incidents at each business. So, and we'll number them one to ten so that they know if they're filling out a report to go to these locations or if they, they have downtime, they could stop at the top ten locations so that we can have an impact and try to reduce crime.
Very good. Maybe off, off meeting, it would be kind of interesting to at least have that top ten list circulated to city managers so we can at least get kind of an idea in our own heads of which businesses and where they're being impacted. That might make us noodle on some other thoughts.
No problem.
Environmental stuff that we might be able to do, whether it's lighting or pedestrian. You know, usually sidewalks and lighting have had a big impact in certain areas of the community. Probably not for this particular situation, but there may be some things we can think of.
All I can suggest is and, and wish very much so that they work with us because the strategies that we've implemented in other areas have shown that it, they're very effective and will work exceptionally well in those businesses.
Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I went out on a ride along and we went through the town center and, and one of the things that we found was that the businesses themselves don't communicate with each other, so they all have the security guards and people know that they're coming and going, but they don't communicate. And is there, is there anything that we can do to kind of help introduce them to each other or help, you know, help create a, you know, more of a unit in, in the town center specifically that, you know, people would be more willing to work together? Or is that just something that each of the businesses, they just want to do their own thing and, you know, couldn't care less?
So each one of them, some of them do work together, but there are others that work more or less on the satellite. You know, they're concerned with their business, what's going on there. If they can push it over to the other business, that's okay with them. But I, that's why we included in our strategies specifically around the town center so that we know what's going on and we can try to have more preventative measures on our own. But yes, I would like to at least try to bring their various security systems together to try to work a little bit better with us.
Thanks.
That would, that would help us out greatly.
Mr. Brandstad.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, is there a significant difference in the authorities between a business and would probably be a smaller business that where the ownership is local or as opposed to a business that's a part of a national chain of where the local manager may be dealing with policy? Or to, to work cooperatively would need higher up approval to do that. And, and with that approval, might also need some budget resources to do that. That, that, that causes them to not be as aggressive as, in working with us the same way.
So, so the, the large chains, some of them work exceptionally well with us, hands down. They open up the doors, they invite us in, they want us to work with their security. They're looking for insight. They're looking for ways that they can work with us differently. Myself and the city managers just went to a meeting less than a week ago with one of the large chains here in the city to see what we can do to help them a, a little bit more. And then we have others who will, they will put, put more or less systems and money behind it, but they don't want the enforcement there. They don't want the actions there, even though they're the ones taking the largest loss, losses within the city.
And in terms of the kite as the, one of the largest, the largest property owner with multiple tenants there, do they sort of defer on matters related to this to the individual tenants?
Yes. There are certain things that they, they will do like, they'll put up the, the large camera system with the flashing light on there, but for the most part, they leave it primarily up to each individual tenant.
I've got another question, sorry to belabor this, but this is good stuff. The data is driven by calls for service, right?
Yes.
So to the extent there are businesses that don't want enforcement, is there value in creating a policy that says, until you want to partner us in whatever way makes sense, we will not respond to your calls for service?
Can do it.
Can do that.
No, sir, that would not be a, a good move on, on our, our behalf.
I get that, but it's also beating one's head against the wall. If you go and do your job and they don't want to pick up the ball and play ball for their benefit, collectively, the community's benefit. What kind of a partnership is it?
Well, you know, we learn to do a workaround. We learn to adapt our strategies based on who we're, we're dealing with. Those who want to partner with us, we go in and we make those arrests. We do the emphasis patrols, we do the follow up. Those that don't, and they're on the top ten, then we start making extra efforts to go by the business, stop through the business, park in front of the business, spend a little extra time there when we do have to take reports. So there's, there are different ways that, that we're, we're doing it, doing the same thing.
I appreciate that and I'm not trying to suggest that we should turn a blind eye to crime, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way to incentivize partnership.
Yes. And one, I wanted to correct one thing. You said it was driven by calls for service, but it's also driven by officers' actions, their observations and their, their stops as well. One of the things I wanted to point out on this particular slide is our motor vehicle thefts. When we started the, at the end of last year, if, in the third quarter, when we started with the, the Flock system, our stolen vehicles were up close to the thirty percent mark. And now we're down sixty seven percent. And that area alone has been like our biggest turnaround and focus within the city because we know that stolen vehicles impact so many other areas of crime. And so to push it close to the seventy percent mark is tremendous. There, that, that what we show here represents, you know, over four hundred less victims of, of stolen vehicle crimes within the city. So here, as you could, as you can see, once, once the law changed back as far as our pursuits and, and eludes, our, our, our lewds are slowly coming back into the same perspective that it was prior to the law and back to, close to the areas of two thousand and twenty one. We're still having some issues with individuals who still take off on us and think, thankfully, we have good officers that we take the time to train as far as the law is concerned as relates, relates to our pursuits so that we can follow up where necessary and we can also pursue them when, when necessary. follow up where necessary and we can also pursue them when when necessary. It's about smart policing. So our eludes are now down forty nine point three percent. And our pursuits are slightly up from from where they were of thirty three and a third percent.
So what are you hearing from other jurisdictions? Are they experiencing similar levels of success or not?
It it's it's more of a mixed bag. Some are are not seeing anything, but a lot of them have increased their pursuits pursuits tremendously. Each agency is is completely different. Here in Lakewood, we took the time to bring all of the sergeants in and train them on the law, talk about it specifically. And also how we are going to handle it in in Lakewood. And so we're seeing a decrease in our eludes, but we are are pursuing when necessary and when safe.
Great.
And officers have been good on on their own about calling off things when when they deem it not safe and supervisors as well. So we're going to try to stay on top of things here in the city. Our our year over year numbers as relates to shots fired within the community. They still have been going down since two thousand, since twenty twenty two. They're up slightly from last quarter. But but our overall total numbers are down seventeen percent from last year, which is down seven percent from the previous year. So we're working to reduce the random shots fired within the community. This is the one we went over and it shows the the biggest reduction in in crime, the sixty seven percent for our stolen vehicles. As as you can see, the biggest drop in our second quarter stats on the left hand side where we went from three hundred and fourteen in the second quarter down to seventy five. And this is enough total number collisions, although it's down by nine percent. And also it's down seventeen percent from our quarter one to quarter two. It it's still in my estimation, should be down even more for a city this size. And this is our overall numbers that shows you the full scale of activity and what we're we're doing within the city. The overall reductions in crime and and where we're moving within the city. So there was a page that I handed out to you and that this is our each day, we 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 analyze crime on a daily basis. And so I I wanted to show you where we are today. This is this covers our second quarter. And the on the page that I handed out to you, that shows where we are today as it relates to all areas of crime that we analyze on a daily basis. So each morning, this comes out to the chief and all the command staff so that we're we're adjusting to crime in a twenty four hour period. Any questions?
Just want to make sure that we didn't steal any more thunder there. Excellent report, excellent work. Investments in personnel and technology are clearly paying off from the data. So we appreciate that. Any questions by members of council? Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you present. We appreciate it. Thanks for the report back on the gentleman from last week, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you for the report back on the gentleman who was detained last week. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure you knew what was going on as far as that was concerned.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
As I say, you can't make this stuff up. Okay, very good. So next, we have our city attorney, Ms. Walker, with a review of potential code amendments pertaining to penalties for parking in both city roads and rights of way. So Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. This is not the first time this topic has come to your attention. It originally came before you back in February when we brought to your attention the fact that there were police resources going into the issue of parking on sidewalks in certain places in the city where the experience that our law enforcement officers were having is that the amount of the fine was not deterring the misconduct. And in fact, compared the fine amount to what you would pay to park in any number of other places legally. So in the wake of that presentation was a pretty robust discussion by the council because there's a lot of moving parts here. There are places where you've invested in infrastructure. In some ways, maybe displacing where people used to park on the right of way. But there's also the issue of the sidewalks are there for the pedestrians. And I tried to distill from that. I've kept all the notes that I took during that discussion. And what I distilled from that was that I would take a swing at a less fine than what I had been recommending last time. We talked about an escalating scale, topping off at five hundred dollars, possibly impoundment. And instead of doing any kind of an escalation, doing across the board one hundred and forty five dollar fine for any of these parking infractions so that it's one number, it's easily remembered and it's about on a par with speeding tickets. And in fact, I will likely be coming back to you in the coming weeks with taking photo infraction tickets to one forty five because that's now been allowed by the state legislature. So it's one number, it's enough to get people's attention, it's not likely enough to break them. Probably enough to disincentivize the behavior. I've also detailed in the memo some of the parking issues that peak during certain kinds of weather out at the parks and create a dangerous situation where some of our rescue people, our our frontline responders have trouble getting through. That doesn't happen every day, but what I believe our law enforcement would tell you is that the way we treat the offense every day yields a certain kind of culture around the offense and how acceptable it is. I'll give you an example. There is a city in this area that you know not to speed in that city. You just know you're not supposed to do that because they take it very seriously and you know you're going to get a ticket. So that's sort of the perspective on this. I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have. You'll also note that I did look at the cities and there's not a ton of consistency and it definitely reflected the personality of different cities. For example, Puyallup deals with all kinds of interesting parking around fair time. And so people who have property near the fair get to make some money during fair time and they don't have laws that would prohibit people from interesting parking arrangements at that time. Other cities care more about parking. Dupont is at least if you follow their code is very serious about illegal parking. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We've already in our current code have already adopted the Washington Model Traffic Ordinance. We're just adding as amended, right?
That is correct, Mayor Whalen, our city and a number of cities have adopted what's called the Model Traffic Ordinance. It's a set of Washington Administrative Code sections that sort of cover everything from soup to nuts about traffic offenses in Washington. We are not precluded from adopting our own penalty scheme as long as we do it within our ordinance and it's spelled out there.
Got it. As I mentioned, just a quick scribbler's error, I think on page eighteen. There's section three that pertains to parking in the public right of way subsection four refers back to roadway, which is really part of the right of way, but specifically that section should be, I think, just right away. I think you want to keep it to that. You've already got the similar section language in section two, parking on the roadway, right?
We will give the draft an extra scrub between the term roadway and right of way so that it's not confusing.
In the right spots, yeah. Any questions of Ms. Walker on this? I do believe this embodies and addresses the feedback from the the argument, not argument, the conversation we had the last time. Mr. Brandstetter, did you have some thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I was wondering is how the proposed ordinance that you're recommending addresses the difference between a sidewalk and a mixed use path such as we have the the ten foot mixed use paths around Gravely Lake and some other things which are somewhere in between sidewalks and roadways. Okay, they're there. That's to be able to go and do that. You know, in the same way that a that a bicycle lane that's in the roadway seems to be impacted, but that's not there. And I and many of the complaints that I hear have to do with because those mixed use paths are wide enough for a vehicle to to park on without it being in the roadway at all, although they're on the other side of a curve. That is frustrating and impedes the people who are the intended users of that mixed use path. The pedestrians, the 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 non-motorized ADA equipment users and 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 the slower cyclists, okay? There's, you know, two groups of cyclists. There's the casual learning cyclists and then there's the 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 serious people that we just assume be in the road. But it would seem that that's a distinct type of a spot where parking is 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 viewed uniquely as a problem as opposed to, you know, and if you go down Gravely Lake Drive, that you seldom see a vehicle that's parked with two wheels up on the sidewalk on one side where the where the sidewalk is narrow. But you frequently see vehicles pulled up onto the on on the mixed use path side where they can pull off and they're and they're and they're there to do that. And I think that that's on the other hand, the mixed use paths are more heavily used than the standard with six foot sidewalks.
Maybe we'll get out a definition under section three and new section A. Public right of way is hereby defined as inclusive of the following or something like that, then go to subsection B. That's a good point, just to be clear. Mr. Lawrence Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Walker. Not a question, just a comment. I I appreciate simplifying the code so that it's one fee or one fine for the violation and even getting to be the same fine for future violations, I think, is is good. And I think it's easier for our residents to remember. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Brandstetter?
Other than Mr. Mayor, I would be comfortable with this ordinance as drafted appearing on the next consent agenda on August fifth.
I wouldn't be too long as we get a chance to read the new definition section for right of way, which I assume will be clear, cogent and convincing, as they say. Anyone else?
Absolutely.
Very good. Well, thank you for your work on that. We appreciate it. Okay, so next we have the meat and potatoes of tonight's agenda, the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic review. For this, we have our planning division manager, Ms. Spear. Let's just chat a little bit about sort of the context here by which we find ourselves. Ms. Spear is going to give an overview and then I I think we should be clear with ourselves. This is a significant body of work that may take more than two sessions to to get through. And we're set for two study sessions tonight included. And speaking for myself, there's a lot of good significant work that's gone on here by our folks on the planning commission, certainly staff, Ms. Spear and others. And we want to give it, you know, its due course. And so what I think would be helpful tonight as we go through, you know, if there are sections that are identifiable after we get Ms. Spear's overview, we can go back and address in a systematic sort of chronological way. So for example, if council member Brandstetter has a particular scope of question, let's just kind of get everyone's feedback on that scope. And then go to the next section as opposed to having five or six issues by Mr. Brandstetter and then Mr. Lawrence Hill has three or four and, you know, Mr. Pearson has five or six. Let's kind of get it all out on that area to keep it somewhat clear from the spear in terms of response. But I know it's an overview. There's a lot of material. I I do want us all to be mindful that we don't need to exhaust ourselves till midnight tonight. So I'd like to keep our comments in response to her report as brief as we can and succinct so we can move to the next section. Ms. Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what I'm actually going to do, based on what the mayor was just mentioning, is go to this slide to begin, just to explain at this point how the entire period of time in front of you regarding this issue is is scheduled. So you're correct, Mr. Mayor, we have two study sessions, one tonight and one on August twelfth. And then there's a public hearing on August nineteenth. There is another study session the week following and then a continuation of the public hearing on September third. And then there'll be another study session where if the council's ready to do so, presumably that's the time to talk any amendments that the council may want to bring forward. And then action at this point is scheduled for September sixteenth. So you actually have four study sessions and two public hearing slots on your agenda between now and September sixteenth.
Just one point of clarification on logistics. And I I just ask because I'm kind of a paper guy. So sometimes, and we'll see if we need to go this far after tonight's discussion, sometimes it might be helpful to have the printed packet for the whole comprehensive plan. I know it's a pain and for Ms. Schumark would probably be burdened with doing it for all seven of us. But for me, it's easier to mark stuff up as I go along on paper as opposed to on the computer. But we'll see if everyone's of similar mindset. If they're not, don't worry about it. But I just throw that out there for a thought.
My initial reaction is that tonight's packet was nine hundred and sixty nine pages. That did include some supplementary materials. It's not just the plan, the drug, the regulations. And then I am assuming between now and September sixteenth, there will be edits requested. So maybe providing you the current version for before August twelfth. And then maybe another updated hard copy on the September ninth, if that would be sufficient.
Well, before you even go to that effort, we'll hear from people tonight whether that's even necessary because you're right, it's a lot of paper. And we're already talking a lot about trees in Lakewood, so don't want to kill anymore. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I I think this looks like a plenty of opportunities for discussion. But as we individually go through what we have here and we have a a suggestion for an edit or a question that we want to just sort of get on, get on the table to to be clarified that are you you open to us emailing through the city manager to you or comments on that? Or how would you like us to do that? I would normally, we would send him to the city manager and he'd do that, but I'm also kind of okay with the answer not coming back until the next study session if you think on that.
And I would defer to the city manager, but I think that's just fine to send in any questions or thoughts to him as they come to you. And then I would be gathering them up and bringing the information to you each time. Yeah.
Okay. And and my only question about the schedule on the screen is I I am trying to decide what bucket the Tillicum subarea plan is in this scheme. It looks like it's not today or the twelfth, is it? But is there, is it sort of got its can you sort of tell what day, which one of your study sessions you expect that to be the?
We will be talking about Tillicum tonight. But you can certainly, if you'd like, have me bring that back if there's questions that arise out of what I bring to you this evening.
I I guess I didn't necessarily consider that a policy change. That's why I was looking at that. I would. I was kind of, policy changes were more things that were being driven by state legislation and reality. But, okay, that's fine. It would almost seem like at some point the Tillicum subarea plan, like the other subarea plans that we've approved in the past, doesn't necessarily have to be part and parcel a part of the comprehensive plan amendments. They've been adopted separately, but then made appendices to the comprehensive plan, if that takes more time to sort out. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll back up. So you've had this in front of you a number of times since September of 2022, but to begin at the beginning, we are in the middle of what is called a periodic update, or for our parlance here in the city of Lakewood, we've been calling it a periodic review that is due by December 31st, 2024, meaning action by city council must be taken by December 31st of this year, and then information provided on to the Puget Sound Regional Council and Department of Commerce for certification and review purposes. We are in a 10-year cycle now. This process of our reviewing the comprehensive plan and the development regulations, basically from page one to page end, is something that used to be on an eight-year cycle. It is now on a 10-year cycle per change to state law. So the next time this large effort will occur would be for 2034. However, in recent state law changes, there is now a five-year check-in called an implementation progress report. So once the council wraps this up at the end of this year, by the latest, just know that in 2029, there will be a smaller version where the focus has been tasked for the city to look at the housing element and how the changes to that this year are being implemented, looking at permit processing timelines, and looking to any actions required to achieve reductions on greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. So there are certain specific topics that the state legislature has identified for this first implementation progress report, at least, if not in all of them in the future, where you can see where their interest lies at the moment. In terms of process here in Lakewood, we're basically where the star is. There's been a work plan, there's been the community engagement that's been going on for almost two years, there's county, city, and agency collaboration that's been happening throughout, there's the draft plan and regulations that the Planning Commission have reviewed and recommended to you, there's the CIPA review that's ongoing, and there are staff reports have been presented, both at the Planning Commission and now to you this evening. The Planning Commission held three public hearings, and so in a couple of meetings, you are scheduled to hold your first, but you are, as I said, scheduled to have two public hearings at this point. The CIPA determination that's there, our comment period on our draft environmental impact statement closed last, I'm sorry, it closes this, losing count, July 31st, excuse me, so a week from Wednesday, and then we will be dealing with any comments that are received on that, and then moving forward with a final version of our environmental impact statement. We have already submitted notice to Commerce of intent to adopt, and also we've received the feedback from Puget Sound Regional Council on the draft, so there are some edits that they are recommending that we are considering for incorporation. Council, again, mid-September scheduled at this point to adopt the plan and the regulations, and then once that action is taken, the final versions are sent both to Commerce and to PSRC, and then the certification process at PSRC will happen next year. So we just went through this schedule. Touching on public engagement in a little more detail, just to make it clear what's happened since, again, September of 22, there have been two websites live, there's been considerable social media outreach, there's been Connections magazine articles, so our citywide hard copy publication, there's been 12 issues of an electronic newsletter focused on this process, and we have about 140 people that have self-subscribed to that. There have been citywide direct mailings about the open houses held to date, and then there's been another direct mailing to shoreline property owners when we had this spring the conversation regarding buffer changes in this process. There were citizen committees for both the housing element and the energy and climate change element in 2023, and then there was a larger steering committee in '23 into ' '24 for the whole comp plan process, and then again, a smaller group for the Tillicum-Woodbrook subarea plan, which met over the past year or so, they just finished their work here recently. There were five open houses held in different locations at different times of day, as well as being hybrid meetings in order to maximize outreach to the public. We've had, as I mentioned, over 10 meetings here at the council level, the Planning Commission had at least 25, and then, again, we've had public hearings so far at Planning Commission. All of this information, all of the recordings of these meetings, all of the meeting materials are available on the site, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview/. What is the scope of this periodic review? There's three big buckets. One is what is required, there's also what is optional, and there are several Lakewood-specific issues which are also coming before you as part of this conversation. So changes that happen to the growth management and its associated WACS, there's changes at the multi-county planning policy level or Vision 2050, and then there's the Pierce County countywide planning policies. The city needs to be consistent with all of those things in its plan and regulations. There are also optional things, meaning items that the GMA says, "Go for it if you want to as a local government, have these, you don't have to." And for us, in 2021, as you know, the energy and climate change element was adopted early, and then we also have three subarea plans, downtown, station district, and Tillicum. And the Tillicum is the one that's seeing the most change, with basically being replaced with the Tillicum-Woodbrook subarea plan. And then there's Lakewood-specific issues, some of which you asked to be included, including from last summer, the question of how accessory dwelling units should be treated in the city, and specifically whether short-term rentals should be allowed in them. Secondly, looking at the city's parking policies and regulations, given the new requirements to allow either two or four or even more housing units per lot in historically single-family areas, and what does that mean for parking, given the city's built-out neighborhoods and the widths of those streets? And then reviewing as well the transportation mitigation fee program that is in place, has been since 2018, and several months ago, this was in front of you as its own item for a little preview about how that program has performed since it was put in place. A summary of what's in the package. We have a completely reorganized and updated comprehensive plan, so if you were to try to sit the two documents side by side and note changes, it really wouldn't be possible because of the way it's been reorganized, but also the number of changes that are happening based on state law. There is the replacement of the neighborhood plan for Tillicum with a Tillicum-Woodbrook subarea plan. Related to downtown, it is correcting a couple of code inconsistencies and updating the southern boundary to incorporate several parcels that were rezoned last fall. And then in Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, the changes there relate to removing references to Lakewood Landing, since that project now is not moving forward, and there's other uses being built on at least a part of that acreage. In terms of regulation changes, there are a number to our critical areas ordinance, which is our Title 14 Environmental Protections, in order to comply with current best available science, and also to deal with riparian areas, or basically areas where there is water, be it a lake or a creek or a stream, or if we had any shorelines that were saltwater. There is the action to bring our existing shoreline master program into the code. There's no substantive changes there, it's just simply saying we're not going to recognize it as part of the municipal code. Same thing with the restoration plan. There is a new chapter that is being dropped into our subdivision code at Title 17, in order to have language regarding how lots can be subdivided, or the city must allow them to be subdivided, and that's related back up to the housing densities now that the city must allow in single-family areas. There's a number of changes in our development regulations under Title 18A, B, and C. There are changes to regulations of short-term rentals, whether they are in ADUs or not, that were first brought to you in '23 but not adopted, because they were sent back to Planning Commission. There's a couple of changes that are the result of a bill that passed this year, 1105, about how public noticing needs to be done and conducted, so those are incorporated in. And then there's some other just technical amendments, cleanups that the city has come across as this review has occurred. So let me back up. What the thought process is tonight, and this goes back to your first statement, Mr. Mayor, about how this information is going to be coming to you, this evening I'll be focusing on policies and plans. The meeting on August 12th will be focused more on the development regulations, and that will include the conversation about the transportation mitigation fee, as well as the short-term rentals in ADUs, that will all be in front of you on August 12th. And then there's a third ordinance that I'll mention briefly that I'll talk about again, but the Planning Commission has sent you a third ordinance that has information specific to the downtown subarea. One change that would, the city and the Planning Commission think spur economic development in the downtown, which is a high priority for the city, so I'll talk about that in a moment as well. So in tonight's 969-page memo, you had a couple of things. First of all, there was a discussion under Attachment A about the background for buffer widths that are being proposed for change in our critical areas ordinance. Secondly, Attachment B is the Resolution 2024-03 from our Planning Commission, and that is the one that includes the comprehensive plan as changed, the new Tillicum-Woodbrook subarea plan, and then the changes to the downtown and station district plan. Rather than sending you directly to Attachment B, if you are wanting to figure out how to best use your time to find where the changes are, I would actually refer you to Attachment B1, which is the audit table for the changes to the comp plan. That is a document that has on one sheet, or many sheets, but one setup, the current comp plan's language, whether or not it's being changed, and if it is being changed, why, and then what are the changes proposed. So you can track through that, if there's no change to something, or if there is a change, what it is and why, and that would be the Attachment B1. So again, I would recommend that if you're looking to be most efficient with tracking changes, that is the one to start with. Attachment C tonight is the development regulations, and again, we'll be talking about those on August 12th. Attachment D is a summary of all of the responses that the city has provided to those public comments received at the Planning Commission. And then the final one is that change I was just mentioning that's in its own resolution from the Planning Commission to the downtown subarea. And really quickly on that one, essentially, there is a current allowance of master plan developments within just the town center portion of the downtown, and it has to be a minimum of 10 acres. Given the feedback out of the 2024 biennial review of the downtown plan, coupled with interactions that the department has had this year with developers, interesting in maybe pursuing this option as a way to develop in the downtown area, the recommendation that went to Planning Commission and they agreed with it was to actually reduce the minimum acreage from 10 acres to five, and also to expand the area where a master planned development could happen to anywhere in the downtown, not just in the town center specifically. So that recommendation is all in its own resolution, separate and apart from the larger periodic review. We do, as I mentioned, have our existing supplemental environmental impact statement out. The information within it is focused on transportation and parking, in part because of what the city saw as potential impacts from densifying our single-family areas. It also does have an analysis of the transportation mitigation fee, and as I mentioned, we're working now on the FEIS final supplemental impact statement to come to you as soon as it's ready for review, although this is not a document you would be taking action on. The tribes, the utilities, the special districts, education partners, public agencies, other government partners, and then community partners that have been engaged with the city throughout the last two years on this process are listed on the slide in front of you now. We tried to be very proactive in giving early and frequent feedback and information about what the city was considering, and we also actually had to be talking to some of these districts and partners, because some of the things that are included as requirements for the city are incorporating their long-term plans and their capacity, particularly related to infrastructure where we're going to be growing. So all of these groups have been involved, and some have provided feedback already, some may provide feedback as we get into the council's hearings. Just a little more detail there, we've had to collect capital facility information from water, sewer, schools, transportation, including WASDOT and the transit facilities, transit utilities, and then the other, the power utilities, for instance. We had to incorporate all of that into the '24 draft. The Department of Commerce is one of the agencies the city must notify, and so we've done the intent to adopt, based on the Planning Commission's draft, just to let them know that this is on its way now through the city council process. Once you have finished your final action, it will go back to them in final version. Puget Sound Regional Council is the other agency that looks at what happens with this comprehensive plan periodic review, and it has a little bit more teeth, I'd say, compared to Commerce's review, because PSRC has its hands on the purse strings of some federal transportation funding. And so what it is doing as an entity is reviewing particularly transportation and then housing related to transportation policies and goals that the city is setting here, to see if they are consistent with Vision 2050 and also the regional growth strategy that it adopted last, in '22. Excuse me, sorry. So the preliminary review by PSRC is complete. We did receive their comments last week on the draft that was approved by Planning Commission, and as I mentioned before, comments that they have made, we are taking a look at that internally, and will be providing feedback to you, as well as potential amendments based on that as we move forward. Some of the other agencies that Lakewood has voluntarily worked with in this process is Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Natural Resources, both of those focused almost exclusively on our critical areas ordinance, and then a little bit in our shoreline master program. We've heard back from WASDOT on our draft transportation element, and then we reached out to ICLE, the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, regarding our energy and climate change element. If you recall, when Mr. Buer presented that to you, ICLE is one of the partners that he engaged with and we continue to track with to create the energy and climate change element in 2021. You look like you have a question. Okay, thank you. Oh, okay. So this is a brief breakdown, a high summary breakdown of the differences between the '23 and the '24 comprehensive plan. There are 11 elements in '23's version, which is actually in effect right now, and then the 2024 draft jumps to 15 elements, and then in addition to that, there's going to be formal appendices, including things like the subarea plans, the Parks Legacy Plan, the Non-Motorized Transportation Plan, et cetera. There will also be background reports and technical data at ease of reference as an appendix to our comp plan, and then narratives that, in some respects, used to be in the comprehensive plan itself, they're getting pulled out, so the plan is much more streamlined. It's got very clearly defined introductions, goals, strategies, and then moving on to the next element. The other thing I would note here is that you'll see it two-thirds of the way down this screen in brackets. The Shoreline Management Act is now considered part of our comprehensive plan, its goals and policies. So that doesn't mean we have to say we have incorporated it, but it is done by state law, but that is being, part of that is the result of bringing our shoreline master program into our regulations as well. The other thing I would say is, if you see the name of a chapter in '23, for instance, introduction, and you look at introduction and see it's also called that in '24, that does not mean the content is verbatim. It is not, and economic development would be the same way. So even though it's called the same thing between '23 and '24, the content has changed, and you'll see that if you take a look at Appendix B1, it'll be very clear with what all the changes are for each of those existing elements, as well as the content for the new ones. what all the changes are for each of those existing elements, as well as the content for the new ones. So before I stop, step into the top issue, which is housing, some of which you've heard and discussed before, just wanted to see if there's any questions or comments to date.
In your discussion on the list, it talked about a lot of different things, but it didn't talk about essential public facilities, which is one of those areas that we kind of, sometimes gets in the way of what we want to do, and that there are some higher level regulations around to do that, whether it be for adult family homes or others in the behavioral health thing. Do they fit in here, or is that just a separate area?
Yes, the third one down on the right-hand side.
So we're writing that in where it wasn't written before.
Capital Facilities was also in the other one, but that element is being updated.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Anything else? Okay. So jumping in then into the top issue, which you're familiar with already, because we've talked about some of this at length, but to remind, there is several layers of action required by the city. Before there was ever this discussion about densifying the single-family areas, there was the idea of growth targets for Lakewood through 2044, and there was the overall growth target that needed to be met. But now, starting with this periodic review, there are also specific growth targets in housing depending on your economic segment, so low, very low, extremely low, moderate market rate, et cetera. Housing now needs to be identified, the number of units the city's planning for at each of those levels, as well as planning for permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter. The documentation in our comprehensive plan needs to show how the city is planning to achieve housing availability for all. Then there is the idea of the moderate housing, which is the term that encompasses middle housing and ADUs. There's, the new term of the moment is step housing. That planning is to cover emergency shelters, transitional, emergency, and permanent supportive. And this was actually something that you did last year. If you remember, there was a conversation about allowing emergency housing to happen anywhere where motels and hotels are allowed in the city, and then also allowing other types of housing in other residential areas. So that's already been completed. So we did that about a year early. And then the other things that are required in this process are racially disparate impact analysis, displacement analysis, and then anti-displacement work. So all of that is incorporated into the various policies and goals that are in the new version of the housing element, but also some of the others in the plan as well. In terms of our targets, on the top table there, you'll see 20 estimate and then 44 allocation. The 20 estimate is the number of housing units coming out of the decennial census. The 9378 number there is the number of additional units that Lakewood is supposed to show capacity for by 2044. So that is the total growth number. And then you see across the rest of that table that breakout by area median income. So again, there's specific numbers that bottom row across of the type of, or how many housing units for each type based on economic impact, area median income, excuse me. And then at the far right, you'll see emergency units at 574. That's the target there for the city. And the way that was accomplished last year with our actions, when we brought this to you and then you adopted it, the areas in the city that allow hotels and motels, particularly Pacific Avenue and South Tacoma Way, there are over 1,100 housing units in hotels that could be converted. But there are other areas of the city that allow hotels and motels where either it is one of those units, or it's something else, could be built or redeveloped and used as emergency units. So that number has already been achieved as well with the capacity planning last year. In terms of the growth targets then, not only for housing and jobs and where they are targeted in the city, the downtown has about a quarter of the total new units planned for within it. It has about three-quarters of the new jobs for Lakewood identified in the downtown boundaries. Station District, again, about 20% of the new housing units, and then about 13% of new jobs. The rest of the city then needs to be absorbing roughly 57% of those housing units and 13% of the jobs. So going across there, the idea is carrying through of the two subareas, taking the majority, or the most concentrated growth, I should say. And then other housing development happening across the city, especially with the densification that is required, there is no concern on the part of Lakewood to meet this number. What is moderate housing? Well, it's middle housing and it's ADUs. Well, what is that? Middle housing, on the left-hand side there, you'll see it's everything from duplexes up to cottage housing. Within the new state law requirements, the city of Lakewood has to allow at least two middle housing units per lot in single-family areas. However, if those lots are less than a quarter mile from a major transit stop, or if any of the units is affordable, then it goes from two to four units per lot. If there is no sewer service in an area, however, it is limited to two still, and there are a few pockets left in the city that are not yet sewered. In terms of accessory dwelling units, again, allowing at least two on a legal lot in all areas that allow single-family homes. And they can be in any combination of one attached, one detached, either two attached or two detached, any one of those things is fine. And also a note, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and multifamily can also have ADUs. So over time, the idea here is not the city requiring anybody to do this by any specific date. The idea here is that the city has changed its laws, changed its rules, and its regulatory scheme to allow this to happen, and it's up to a private property owner to decide if and when they would want to pursue this. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Is there anything in the legislation or any of the sort of regulatory guidance that's coming out that references that the ownership has to be common for the multiple units on a single-family lot, as opposed to some sort of county minimized airspace deal where single-family unit A can be owned by Mr. and Mrs. Smith, single-family unit B on the same tax parcel can be owned by Mr. and Mrs. Jones or whatever.
No, that's exactly what's encouraged. This is multi, multi-unit and condoization.
Multi-owned.
Multi-owned, yes.
Interesting.
The idea here is the city, along with every other jurisdiction in the state, the city is trying to open the doors for more housing to happen on the same geographic footprint, right? And the idea of more units per lot equals less land costs equals more affordable housing. And with the land taken out of it in terms of condoizing something, the price of that housing unit might even go lower. That's the theory.
So in terms of us opening the door to allowing it, you know, in terms of our regulations to do that, were there any provisions in the state laws that are sort of asking us to do this about how to unlock the restrictions on Platts in terms of the underlying constraints that occur in certain neighborhoods that are, that limits, have limits that are different than that? Did the state say that those would no longer be operable, or that the city can overrule them? Or do or did they, are they silent on that?
The way the state law is written right now is that if there are any covenants and restrictions or CCNRs in place pre-2023 that are not based on any sort of racial or other disparate reason, then they would still govern. So you may have areas of the city that do have CCNRs that would say city code, that's all well and good, but in this area of the city, that's not going to apply. Whether that changes over time, whether in a future legislative session, the legislature tries to take that on, it remains to be seen. They do have, and a bill that was adopted this year made it very clear that if any additional CCNRs are adopted going forward, they will not be able to try to overturn this. It's everything that predates the adoption of those requirements.
So did that create a work on our staff as we are looking at handling the projections of whether we've made enough changes to meet all the goals? That we have to identify the areas of where those restrictions are there and that count numbers there?
If what you're asking is when we did our capacity analysis, did we take CCNRs into account, or were you asking a different question?
I think that's, I think that's the question, if the CCNRs are going to, for instance, prohibit much of this happening in, say, Oak Brook. Okay, did we then figure that Oak Brook wasn't going to have that as great a capacity as another area in the city, even though there are similar side blocks and density?
Thank you, yes. When the analysis was originally done, staff was able to go back through recorded Platts and take a look at whether there were CCNRs. It wasn't actually every single parcel in the city, it was more of a spot check. So existing neighborhoods, checking, another neighborhood check. And so we did take into account areas where we thought CCNRs would limit density in order to come up with a number of the capacity of units. Having said that, the designations and the zoning ranges that you will see in the proposed mapping and regulations says this land use zone, this is the type of density you can achieve per lot or per acre. And then when the time comes for someone to come in and apply to do it, should they want to, there will be this analysis done for critical areas. And then if someone were to come in and say, hey, that neighbor, or sorry, that lot is in the middle of a neighborhood with CCNRs, there you have it. We would be noticing those if they were on the recorded plat as the analysis of a permit application happens. But we are not the ones to enforce CCNRs, other than just noting it for this math that takes place.
Thank you, because I remember there was a time of when the thought was, well, CCNRs are not our business. And so we rezoned an area down in Oak Brook that used to belong to Country Club for Multifamily, and somebody submitted a permit to do all of that, and then CCNRs came out and court determined that multifamily development wasn't allowed on that lot to do that. And so it's been built with single-family homes now, you know, but it wasn't, not the same density that it was. But we kind of were caught of just ignoring that, going into that. And I think we misled a developer initially as to what was going to be allowed, and so we're going to have to pay more attention to that.
And I recall the dispute a bit. I don't know if we missed, hopefully we didn't mislead anyone, but I think that the developer in that case should have been aware of the recorded covenants and was made aware of them by the neighbors who filed suit with skilled legal counsel. So cities aren't in the business of enforcing private covenants, for sure. But it was, it was a curtaffel, for sure.
Not sure why this isn't moving forward, one second. There we go. Okay, so all of that talking, all of that text, here we go with our first map for the evening. This is the draft map for 2024, and most of it is exactly what's in the city right now, including in the residential areas. Because what you still see is yellow as the designation, there are zones, multiple zones within these designations. But you'll see that much of the western side of the city is still yellow. And you'll see there are varying shades of yellow, a little difficult, I'll be the first to say, but north and south of the downtown, and then over to the east, there are some other shades of yellow, and I'll explain those in a moment. So from Oak Brook down into Tillicum and Woodbrook, you'll see residential is the land use designation. And then you'll see one called residential target. I'm sorry, residential transit. And that is the darker yellow that again is kind of on the east, or yes, eastern half to a third of the city. The residential target is an overlay, meaning everything applies as would in the residential zone and designations, except for this whole conversation we're having about the number of units per lot. Everything else is exactly the same. So the air corridors, the downtown, the multifamily zones, mixed residential, neighborhood commercial, open space, public institutional are all the same as they are now. What you see there, though, are these dashed lines that are kind of bubbles almost on the map, and that is to try to show you graphically where the residential transit overlay would apply. And you see it, kind of that letter U from the air corridors down across through Lakeview over into downtown, and then north again up along Bridgeport. That is where the higher density on single-family zones must be allowed. So that's where you're going to see up to four units per lot, where you're going to have limits on parking requirements. And then you'll also see the same thing down in Tillicum, actually. There is, you'll see there a darker space of yellow at the bottom of Tillicum as well. This would be the zoning map to implement that designation map. And as you can see, there's more colors here and there's more names of zones. But to try to summarize, again, the yellow is the residential, but you'll see various shades. The oranges are the commercial, the purples is the air corridor, green is open space, blue is public institutional, the bright pink is neighborhood commercial. And then that dotted area of yellow, again, that kind of mirrors what you saw on this one. It's now you're seeing where exactly in those zones that higher unit per lot would be applied. When you look at the additional capacity here in these new zones, and I'll explain a little more of this in a moment, but the total additional capacity that's estimated because of the upzoning, not upzoning, because of the increased density within current zones, is about 7,200 units. So in addition to the capacity that the city already had for future housing growth, the allowance of additional ADUs and middle housing within the residential areas is estimated to result in about that 7,200 number of additional units. Most of that is in R3, R4, central business district, and the mixed residential zones. Although you will see that in the residential transit overlay, again, where those dots are in the yellow area, there is about 530 additional units because of the additional density that the city must allow in that area, as well as there's a little bit of that down in Tillicum. Coming back, though, to the west side, and you'll see around the lakes, a couple of different shades of yellow. This is where, at one time, you would have seen residential estate that is gone as a designation. But we still have zones that are at lower density around the lakes for a couple of different reasons. First and foremost, environmental protection, but also because of the infrastructure that is in place there. So all of these, again, the names are the same, the densities are changing a little bit, and I'll go over that in a second. But the biggest change you see is in those areas near where there is a current major transit stop or where a major transit stop is planned. The, I'm sorry for the size of this text, but what you see at the top is density calculated by units per acre. And then you'll see in the row just above that all the way across, R1, R2, R3, R4, MR1, MR2, which are the mixed residential zones, and then MF or multifamily, 1, 2, and 3. And you'll see in all of those areas, the density is going up. And you will see in R1 through R4 that there's actually not just one number, but there are three. And that is because there are three different versions that are anticipated in the code that when someone is looking at what they can do on their property, or someone brings in an application at the counter, the analysis that needs to happen. First of all, are there critical areas on the site or affect? First of all, are there critical areas on the site or affecting the site? Secondly, is there, uh, the location of the lot near that transit or within that transit overlay or not? And then third, uh, which zone is it in? Okay. So R one, the numbers there, if you can't read them are seven, three point five and one point eight. What that means, and this is explained further on down in the code, is that in R one now, instead of the one point four or five units per acre density, it is going up to seven units per acre if there is no critical area and if it is, uh, within a quarter mile of the transit overlay. Three point five, there are critical areas or it is not next to, uh, the quarter mile zone of the, uh, major transit stop. One point eight, there are critical areas. Maybe I just said that wrong. Excuse me if I did. There are critical areas and it's not near transit. So I may have just botched that, but the idea is it's a descending density based on those caveats that are listed lower down in the code. So questions?
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Um, are, are these, are these the minimum density numbers required by the new state law changes?
There is not a minimum density per se in this code.
Yeah. Is this the minimum maximum density levels?
This is taking two units per lot or four units per lot and translating that into acres. So with the size of the lots, for instance, for R one, it's twenty-five thousand square feet. Looking at that, taking the number of units per lot, but looking at the density allowed in an acreage, this is the math that came back from our black box that said seven units per acre if it's affordable. Uh, and or it's next to the transit, three point five, if it's not next to transit or, uh, critical areas, et cetera.
And that's based on the, the state law requirements?
Yes, yes.
We're not exceeding the state law requirements. We are meeting the minimum state law requirements for these different zones. That's what the density numbers are reflecting.
Correct. And I should actually probably have said that from the start. The approach that the city has taken and is in front of you this evening is to say what is required by state law changes and nothing more. So trying to preserve as much of the pre-existing comprehensive plan as it is in place right now, making the changes at the minimum level that state law requires across the board. So that's reflected in these densities.
Thank you. And then one more question, um, and not to get too in the weeds on it, but it's, it's, it's an interesting, you know, how much of your parcel is affected by critical areas? If a, if a buffer just kind of sweeps into the corner, now is that, you know, is that a critical area site fully? And so now you're, you know, with the least, the lowest number, how, how, how does that, um, play into this?
Yeah. The way the code reads right now is it's a very simple statement is if there is a critical area on your, on your parcel or a buffer, you are limited to a lower density.
Okay.
So if there is a need or desire by council to amend that, to clarify, that would need to happen. I'm just saying that right now, it just says if there's a critical area, less density.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So to summarize the changes in the residential world then for our, uh, periodic update, there is sufficient land capacity for housing affordable to all economic segments as well as to meet the, uh, total growth target of that ninety-three seventy-eight. There's that seventy-four hundred plus unit increase in capacity because of the changes to allow more middle housing and ADUs in single family areas. A, a point for planning for the council over time is that with this densification, there will be increased utility and transportation infrastructure demand. That is something that obviously won't happen all at once. But as time goes by and this densification happens, uh, you can anticipate um, increased demand for water, sewer, power, as well as transportation, uh, infrastructure. There is this new residential transit overlay within a quarter mile of a major transit stop. And with all of this planning, taking a look at capacity and the growth targets, no changes have been proposed to either the downtown or the station district subarea targets. They are staying the same through, uh, what's been proposed and brought to you. So unless there's any other questions on housing, I'm going to move on to the next topic. Okay. Uh, we've mentioned a number of times now the subareas, but just a quick reminder of where they're all located in the city. Downtown, where we sit right now is in the gold on this map. The pink to the east of it is Lakewood Station. And then down south in the purple, you'll see not only the Tillicum area, which is the current planned boundary, but it incorporates in twenty-four Woodbrook as well. So these would be the three subareas in place under this new draft comprehensive plan package. There are, I should note, other areas of the city called centers of municipal importance, but they do not have their own, for instance, uh, planning goals or development regulations. Whereas downtown and station district have a plan, a set of regulations and a planned ordinance. Tillicum Woodbrook is only goals at this point, only policy. It does not have any new sets of regulation or any, uh, planned action ordinance accompanying it. So the little more detail into Tillicum Woodbrook, the original plan for just Tillicum was adopted in twenty-eleven. Two years ago, the city adopted an addendum that just said, hey, since twenty-eleven, this much of implementation, uh, particularly related to infrastructure has occurred and this is what's left. Now in twenty-four, that plan from twenty-eleven is going away and this is being replaced by the proposed Tillicum Woodbrook subarea plan. The reasoning behind bringing Woodbrook into this subarea plan is, uh, while it's obviously geographically isolated from Tillicum, both of the areas are, uh, re- guarded by their own residents and businesses as isolated from the rest of Lakewood. So they kind of see themselves in a common boat and they have connection between, um, themselves down in the southern part of the city. And, uh, there was participants from both Woodbrook and Tillicum engaged in the, uh, work to create this subarea plan. So there are six goals within the plan as proposed. First is to celebrate essentially existing public facilities, community centers, looking at the diverse commer- community and I invest in leadership development and the ability of the neighbor, uh, neighborhood itself to advocate for its needs. The idea behind this one is really to, to bank on the city's neighborhood coordination program, which has been adopted and we now have our neighborhood coordinator working regularly in these areas. But also to help identify and maybe build up those people within Tillicum and Woodbrook who might someday be performing similar, uh, actions for the public good as you see in Springbrook. They have a really organized Springbrook connections. And maybe someday Tillicum and Woodbrook with their neighborhood association or some other organization ends up, uh, in a similar boat. Looking at diversifying housing options to allow the current residents in Lakewood, particularly in Tillicum and Woodbrook to continue to afford living there. Looking at multimodal transportation to increase access from that area to employment and social activities. Increasing economic opportunity within Tillicum and Woodbrook. And then looking at, uh, air quality and climate change over time. Obviously those two areas of the city are bisected by I five, major, uh, uh, impact on climate change, uh, or not climate change, excuse me, air quality. And so noticing and planning for as much as possible mitigating the impacts that are anticipated in that part of the city. The next, uh, other zoning comprehensive plan change that you're seeing here is the downtown subarea plan. And I mentioned this earlier. Nine parcels were rezoned last year. They're circled on this map. They are to the south of the southern boundary of the downtown. And so the dark green fatter line is where the current boundary sits. This is right along Wild Air and just, um, to the eastern side of that, uh, shape. And so these are now zoned central business district and that zone is only allowed in this downtown subarea. So the idea here is to update the boundary to incorporate them into the downtown. And then those parcels with that, um, subarea development regulation code would be able to be moving forward when form-based code development and, uh, spur some redevelopment there. In the station district, I mentioned this before, but again, the idea is to remove reference to Lakewood landing since it's no longer going to be happening. And then the other thing that's included in there is a recommendation to change the station district review from an every two-year process to an every five-year process, which was what was adopted in the downtown, um, ordinance changes already. So making the station district as well as the downtown five-year reviews rather than every two years. There is also one parcel rezone that's being requested as part of this package, and this is a, a parcel for Ward's Lake Park. The star is at the top of it, but it's that whole hatched area on the map. It is just adding another parcel into the zone that will allow it to get, uh, added to Ward's Lake Park. It is a parcel that's already owned by the city. It's just changing the zoning to allow, uh, that to be incorporated into Ward's Lake Park. So in tiny print here, this is a little bit of what we've already talked about. But tonight was the overview of the process and then those plans and policy changes as well as housing. Next time, which would be August twelfth, will be development regulations. We'll spend some time on the shoreline and riparian buffer things as well as the transportation mitigation fee program and the discussion of, uh, accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals. August nineteenth would be your first public hearing. August twenty-sixth is kind of collectively asking questions that either stem from this first two study sessions or the public hearing itself. And then there's the second part of the public hearing on, uh, September third, which is a Tuesday following Labor Day. September ninth, one more study session. And then at this point on the sixteenth, you would be taking action on three ordinances, one for plan and policies, one for the development regulations package, and then the third one that is specific to the downtown master planned community, uh, change. And that is where we are for the evening.
Very good. Why don't we start with questions on process first? Do we have any process questions, scheduling questions, concerns? I see none. So you must have done a fabulous job in all of that. Thank you. Any substantive questions for tonight? I think it was a good overview of the policy changes or the policy updates, if you will, uh, from our prior work and the planning commission's work. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, just, you know, would, this is a, this is a major overhaul, um, of the plan, the, the comprehensive plan, but, but I also think that there's, you know, maybe some areas that we need to look at, you know, doing more than, than just, you know, updating the plan and, and, and the, the Tillicum area to me is, is something that we've tried to do things with in the past and I don't know if it's really been all that successful and, and kind of looking at, you know, does the zoning there make sense? Is there some other ways that we can, you know, one of the, the topics that was brought up was changing the, uh, not the PDD requirement, but from ten acres in the, in the town center area to five acres in the downtown. What was that? The mass.
Master plan development agreement.
So, you know, is, is there something that we could get? You know, would it make sense for a master plan development down in the Tillicum area? You know, is there enough space to really even do that? But just getting creative on, on how to, you know, put something out there for folks that would be, you know, interesting for developers to look into and, and try to, try to want to do something. So, um, I drive through there occasionally and my wife drives through there every, every day to work. Um, and it, it, it just seems like we need something more down there to, to really, you know, turn the page, I guess.
We have a residential target area, don't we, down there?
Yes, yes. It's not the entire residential area, but it is, uh, part of Tillicum.
Mr. Brandon Center?
Yeah, Paul, I, I agree with, um, Mr. Mr. Pearson, um, but I think that it's, those are not things that you build into the comprehensive plan, but we have talked before about as a council, we need to have some serious discussions about our program and menu of incentives for development. And it's important for the reasons that he mentioned, and I think it's also important now that we talk about, what kind of incentives do, will we need to meet those sub growth targets of, of, of getting housing particularly built for the different income levels as opposed to just incentivizing market rate housing, uh, uh, to be able to go and do that. So I think that when we adopt the the comprehensive plan, uh, that we are setting for ourselves a work plan. Okay. Then that has to do with, with implementation, particularly with incentivizing because one of our one of the frustrations that has been with, uh, whether it's, uh, Lakewood Landing not happening and things like that is that, is that while we can envision things to do that, if we, if, 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 if we can't incentivize it to the point of where or, or, or set the table to where it pencils out, uh, it, it doesn't happen as quickly as we'd like or at all to be able to go and do that. And so then I think, I think in our, our incentives, program of incentives is going to be something that we will have to look at and it covers all the things that we want to do to try to influence to do that, you know, and, and now that's, some incentives we've done have been very effective. For instance, uh, putting in sewers has been, uh, perhaps one of the most effective incentives that we've had to cause changes at Woodbrook and, 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 and the setting the table for changes in Tillicum to do that. But, um, you, you can't write those into the comprehensive plan. You've got to sort of do them as, 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 as policy and, and think them through.
Could not be part of, I haven't fully reviewed the updates to the Tillicum Neighborhood Association Plan. Those kinds of policy pieces could be part of that plan.
Uh, absolutely. If you're wanting to spur development in that subarea, as I mentioned, there is no regulatory um, chapter being proposed here. It's just goals. So implementation over however many years going forward, we can certainly be looking at either looking at the citywide incentive package and amending it citywide or creating something specific to Tillicum Woodbrook.
Well, interestingly enough, with the discussion of the minor extension of the incentives down on gravelly, we got a little bit of feedback from the public about angst over density spurred by incentives. Did you receive much of that feedback, uh, during the planning commission's sort of public hearing and process that it went through? There angst about density in particular?
There was conversation about housing in general, first and foremost. People were wondering why the changes were being proposed at all. And so it took a while to figure out the question was really, do I have to do this right now or not? And, uh, the answer is no. It is, this is something where the city is having to change its rules and then property owners have the option to take action if and when they choose. There was a few in passing comments about the, uh, for particularly the MFT program, but that really wasn't a focus uh, for most. It was just either I don't want to see condos or duplex right next door in my single family neighborhood. Or we actually did get quite a few questions of when can I start to look at this? There was actually a lot of interest, um, from people in various parts of the city. How can I create an ADU? When am I able to do that? Or how can I figure out with my sized lot? What I'm going to be able to do? So you had people on both sides of the coin at those hearings. By the end, we, and as I mentioned, we had five open houses and then three public hearings. By the end, I think everyone that had engaged at least felt they understood what the rule changes were. And that everyone had received the message that this is not a mandate on them. It is something that gives them a choice.
A couple of comments on, on the Tillicum neighborhood. Uh, you know, one thing that we have done well is to partner with Habitat and through that partnership, we've been able to create what upwards of forty-one-ish single family homes or, or duplexes in, or townhomes over there that really serve that middle income. You know, maybe even less than middle income housing need. That's been a good partnership and I assume we, we can look at the Tillicum neighborhood plan and see what other incentives we can do for an organization like Habitat. further enhance, good work that they've done.
It's that, and it's also now that the city has these actual number targets for permanent supportive housing, as well as these lower, below AMI, below 50% AMI numbers, not only Habitat, but other housing organizations, housing builders on the nonprofit side or the subsidized side need to be a target for economic development as well. And figuring out how to create incentives or other things that will entice them to come into the city is something we'll need to turn, focus on.
Noodling out loud here on the topic of incentives, a little off topic, but still on topic. And on the ADU piece, I don't know if we're doing it, but other communities are. Where, kind of like we did with the sub area plan, some communities have come up with prefabricated sort of approved designs for ADUs so that they can go to the planning commission and say, I want design A because it fits on my lot, and that's already kind of approved. And so they, they don't, I don't want to say suffer, but they don't suffer the delays that are sometimes inherent to the building planning process, application process. If they can pull it off the shelf and say, Plan A works on my lot, what else do I need to do to get, you know, sewer and water and all those things connected, but they can enhance getting it done by an approved plan.
In this package in front of you this evening, we do not have any pre-approved, not to say at all that that's not something you could direct the department to begin working on. There are things like examples that are being developed by SHAPE, South Sound Housing Affordability Partners that may want to pick up. There's those that have been already developed and adopted by other jurisdictions as well. So if that's something the city council wants to pursue, we can pick it up in '25, '26.
I know former Planning Commissioner James Guerrero and his firm are developing stock plans for that exact purpose, so maybe something to take a look at, because that would be a good incentive for folks who want to do ADUs to say, hey, what do I need to do? How do I do it? What's it look like? How do we expedite it? Yeah, if you can get a Plan A, Plan B, cost model A, cost model B, it would be really helpful for people. Yep, absolutely. Mr. Bransdatter.
Yeah, I, I do think the fact that we and, and the planning commission and staff and, and the consultant working with them have been at this for, for, for up to two years. I think that the messaging has been good, that the, the, the changes are not mandates, but they're allowable to be able to go and do that. And, 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 and our challenge going forward is that the people that have been paying attention somewhat, I think have gotten that message because they've consistently messaged it. But we all know that there is this lump of the community that never hears the message until it's happening on the lot next to them. And, and, you know, we're going to have to, to develop that and probably try to get it, get ahead of that so that, you know, rather, we can't just breathe a sigh of relief when we pass this. But probably in the very next Connections newsletter, we're going to have to really go into reinforcing this is that no property owner is being forced to do anything in, in this to be able to go and do that. But it's expanding opportunities down the road to enhance the value of your property or, 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 or make, make, make room for your family to live on the same lot or whatever it, it is. But it's going to be a, be a communications challenge to do that so that we, you know, just, just don't get caught with the, and, 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 you know, and the, the classic was when we cut all the trees down around Waha Lake because they were diseased. And, and, and people showed up one day and the trees were all gone and, and although it had been months in the, in the doing it, and nobody ever heard about it.
And then I get all sorts of late night phone calls. Yeah. So one other question, at least on the ADU topic, have we had much progress with Pierce County on accelerating the sewer connection or de-accelerating the sewer connection fee issue for ADU promotion? Basically, do we have any feedback from the county on what they're doing to incentivize and work with cities like us?
I do not have anything to share with you tonight. I will reach out to them again before August 12th.
Okay, great. Any other questions on this? I am shocked but pleased that we, we made it through this significant piece of work tonight. A lot of content, so obviously many of us will have to kind of re-review now that we've absorbed kind of the overview and, and get ready for the next stage. But thank you for your work. I know it's been a big lift by all of you and, and Bob, thank you for the folks on the planning commission working so diligently as well. Thank you for coming tonight and always having an open listening ear. We appreciate your work. Yeah, very good. Well, thanks. Appreciate that. So those items scheduled for the August 5 regular city council meeting are on your session agenda tonight. Just kind of a description of events to come. We'll now turn to reports by Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Just a few updates here this evening. The first is, just want to report out that the delegation from Gimhe City, Republic of Korea, they left on Sunday, early Sunday afternoon. Wanted to let you know that they did express their gratitude and appreciation for everything that they, that we did for them while they were here. And I specifically want to recognize our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, for her coordination and planning and leadership and pulling that together as well as James and Kate Kim from the Sister Cities Association for their tremendous help and really putting together an itinerary and an opportunity for them to really see Lakewood in our region as a whole. They were very pleased with everything from the accommodations to the selection of restaurants to Summerfest, even the bus that we were able to secure for them to take them around to different, different areas. And as I think some of you might know, they did express that they would like to extend an invitation for a contingent of representatives from Lakewood to come visit with them in the October, middle of October timeframe, and it's our understanding that they're going to be inviting their other sister cities as well. Something that Ms. Grimley and I were just kind of real quickly brainstorming earlier this afternoon was perhaps the next time that the city hosts one of our sister cities that we perhaps, you know, utilize the same format that Gimhe does, which is to invite delegations from all of our sister cities and have them all come at once. Logistically, that, you know, we would have to figure that out. But in fairness, because, you know, right now we're waiting on an official invitation for a delegation to go to the Philippines in early 2025, and of course, Donzoo in China, they would like us to come back, or I have a feeling they would like to come out here and visit. So I just want to let you know that's something that we're kind of noodling internally and maybe not for '25, but maybe for '26, that will be something to, to consider. So just wanted to leave you with that. But again, you know, the relationship with Gimhe, I would say, really couldn't be much stronger. And again, they really, really appreciated the opportunity to come, come and visit. Speaking of Summerfest, I just want to recognize Ms. Dodsworth and, and her team and all of our community partners and the great sponsorships that we had and the vendors and the entertainers and just everybody that really pulled that event together. And Ms. Dodsworth has estimated that and, and a number of other folks have commented that it felt like about what it was last year, about 40,000 people showed up. Want to recognize the police department as well for everything they did, both on the front end and what you could see and what you couldn't see, and ensuring that it was a very safe and secure event, as well as traffic control, which we continue to, you know, make improvements on as, as it goes, as, 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 as that event continues to grow. But again, it was a, it was, it was a wonderful event, and I know many of you were there and just a lot of happy, happy people. So it's good, good to see those smiles, and it was a great, beautiful day, too. So. Also, just wanted to report that our contractor is on site on the Interlock and Bridge, and so they expect to begin major maintenance repairs probably early, maybe later this part of this week, but most likely early next week, where they'll be lifting up the bridge and doing all the maintenance repairs that they need to do. And the goal there is to have that work completed by the end of September. However, it is likely it'll be completed well, well, in advance of that, because again, it's fairly straightforward for them to do what they need to do. They just need to have the bridge all to themselves to be able to do that. So just wanted to report on that. As far as the upcoming calendar, of course, we'll be back on with the farmer's market tomorrow as well as a, the summer concert, actually, summer concert will, actually, the next summer concert will be on June, July 30th, so a week from, a week from tomorrow. Also later this week, if you hadn't gotten an invitation, Lakewood, Lakewood Gardens is hosting a garden party on, actually, next week, I'm sorry, next week, July 28th. On August 1st, there's a couple of United Way of Pierce County events in the morning from 9:00 to 10:30. They're having a virtual event, you know, just focusing on the financial hard, financial hardships that some in our community face, and United Way has really been a leader in, you know, spearheading how we can help the more unfortunate in our, in our community. So if you have an opportunity or wish to attend that, there's a sign up for that. And then later on in the afternoon from 5:30 to 7:30, they're having their premier partner and campaign award reception, and that's down at the Foss Maritime Museum, and if they sent you an invitation, but if not, let us know if you'd like to attend. And then the next big event as it relates to Lakewood, other than, of course, the farmer's market and our summer concerts, is on Tuesday, August 6th with National Night Out. And so once again, we'll be having events at various neighborhood locations. The deadline for neighborhoods to submit is this Friday, July 26th, so once we have all of that, we'll send that out to the council so that you can plan accordingly. And if you do wish to go out with an officer, please let us know and we can get you lined up and assigned to somebody. And those are, that's kind of the, the big items right there. So with that, that's my report.
Very much. Any questions of Mr. Coffield, Mr. Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick clarification. You mentioned farmer's market tomorrow. I thought it was canceled tomorrow.
Actually, I think you're right. It's next week where the farmer's market and the summer concerts get back on. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Anything else for Mr. Coffield? Very good. We'll go to council comments, and Mr. Laura Sella, we'll start with you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short. Summerfest was a home run. It was great. I really enjoyed seeing the Gimhe delegation that was there, having a Summerfest donut from the House of Donuts. That was really good. And just, just seeing all the people that were having a good time. I was impressed this year with the, of all things, the dust control in the parking area. I know usually there's lots of dust that gets thrown up in the air from vehicles traveling through. I know last year there was construction going on as well. But, but this year was better. I don't know what they used to spray down the road, but it looked good. I'll be attending the Landmarks Inherited Advisory Board meeting this week on Thursday, so looking forward to that. And when I went to Summerfest, I drove down Hipkins and it's looking really good. So kudos to city staff for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw many of the photos and videos from Summerfest, and as always, looked like it was a great event. I was unable to attend, unfortunately, I was out of town. But agree with the sentiments from Mr. Coffield, lots of smiling faces out there and successful drone show. So that was, that was good. There was been some unsuccessful drone shows in some surrounding jurisdictions, so always good to see a successful one. On Tuesday, I, or on, yeah, Tuesday, I have Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I'll be going to that. And then Thursday, I have Puget Sound Regional Council. And then this coming weekend, I'm going to try to make it over to Lakewood Garden Summer Garden Party, so that'll be what I'm trying to, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bransdatter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say that I agree with your comments regarding the inquiry about cops returning. We still haven't outlived the negative effects of the show from two decades ago. But that goes on and on. I, 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 I did think that the, the comments that I had with the visitors from Gimhe, they, they, they felt well received and they, and they, and they appreciated the year, regretted that they had to make several changes to their plans. They kept shortening their, their stay to be able to go and do that. And I, and I would be supportive of looking into the direction that the city manager said about, you know, rather than hosting a city at a time, let's, let's do a collective representation to do that, and it doesn't have to be, be annual, but it can be, you know, every, every three years or, or four to be able to go and do that. You know, but, you know, but looking ahead to our 30th anniversary, you know, we, we, we might be able to, to, to do something like that. I, 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 I thought the Summerfest was really well done, and it, and it stayed in tend to the theme of it was, it was like previous Summerfests, but different with new things that they're to do, so it wasn't something that you'd seen before. I think the circus performers from Wenatchee got a very receptive audience and that, that I think the the parking and traffic design each year sort of gets readdressed and improved over time. I thought, I thought it worked really, really well against the backdrop of there still being the detour on, 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 on 104th and Hipkins back out there. And then one, one, one other small thing that I, that I thought was a, a good touch were the there, there, there were, there were, there were four respite areas for pets where you, where there were staff both with veterinary folks and, and water to, to look to, to do that. And, and we had some unfortunate occurrences with pets a year ago in that, in that very hot Summerfest, so I, I don't, I didn't, I didn't hear that we had any, but, but there, there were volunteers that had that set of interests that ended up setting them at disparate sites throughout the Summerfest grounds and were sort of just watching people with pets who are going by looking for pets that had a indicators that they may be, you know, you know, you know, on the verge, on the verge of suffering and, and getting some water and, and doing things. So I thought that, I thought that was a nice, you know, just a, just a nice thing that wasn't necessarily something that the city did, but it was something that the community thought to incorporate into it in a compassionate way. And the, the thing I'm going to do, I'm in the midst with Pierce County of, they, they've dedicated a million dollars of ARPA funds to begin anew to write a plan for a unified approach to, to, you know, to regional approach to homelessness. So we've been reviewing the proposed consultants that are, that are vying to be the, the lead on, on developing that, and we're down to two. We're going to finish those interviews this week so that the, the county council can make a decision and spend some of their money to be able to go and do that. But I was, we, we got both local, but also national people who have been doing this kind of work, and so we're, we're, we're likely to get a plan that has some elements of new perspectives to it that may may, may get us some, some, some documentable results. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think that will be money well spent, and hopefully we can all yield some benefits participating cities and towns on the regional approach to homelessness. It'll help all of us. That'll be good. Thank you for the work on that. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too enjoyed the time we spent with that delegation from uh Korea. It was very nice. They they did seem happy, so it's good to hear that they were sincerely enjoying themselves. So that was great. Summerfest, I had an opportunity for the first time to attend the night show, and I thoroughly enjoyed the drones. They were very creative. The motorcycle stunts caught me off guard for a moment, but they were awesome. The number of vendors, I think, I don't know if we had more vendors this year than before, but it seemed like it was a lot more vendors there, which was good. Mm-hmm. Service good. So I, that's all I have.
Well, very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I have a few items. Hopefully, we'll get done before midnight uh tonight, but just a few. So I too echo the comments on the Gimhe delegation, very much enjoyed my time with them. I had the opportunity to meet with uh the group on Wednesday evening when they came in for dinner, just to kind of welcome them to the the area and to thank them for coming, followed by the noon lunch that we had on Thursday. I thought it was great, and those of you who could attend, it was really great to see so many community players uh that welcomed the Gimhe delegation, including our own representatives from the Korean Women's Association. And I was reminded to make sure I introduced them, which I was glad I did, and I also invited them to come make a presentation briefly about the incredible work they do in the community because of the connection historically with uh members uh Korean descent here in our community and the incredible contributions they've made for decades here. And so that was just very poignant and I think appreciated. So and then uh later that evening, uh I had the Pierce County Regional Council meeting, mostly just uh discussion items um about planning issues, nothing significant uh that I recall. I shouldn't say nothing significant. Ms. Spear led a an update on comprehensive planning from our perspective, and so just to kind of update the members of the regional council on where uh the growth management committee was and its work uh in cities like Lakewood where they were in our work. So kudos to her efforts as always. And then shortly thereafter, I raced to the airport to do a red eye to Chicago to attend a wedding for some friends up in Michigan, so it was a long, long day. But whenever I travel, I really enjoy looking and marveling at other municipalities and their public spaces. I I get envious over uh public spaces done well, and I had a chance to see three different small communities in Michigan. Um Grand Haven, uh South Haven, and another small community between Holland, I think. And the public spaces and public art in these smaller communities, smaller than Lakewood, uh just reemphasize that we're doing the right thing by expanding our parks, our public spaces, the Raze Grant we're going to have, that's going to help us design the Green Loop, the work we're doing to acquire some space for an urban park over at the Colonial Plaza area. These are all really good and important things for a community to become vibrant and more livable. So more on that. Speaking of livability, uh you know, we all had time to reflect perhaps on the ordinance we passed uh last week with regard to uh camping in public spaces and places. And the feedback I have received has been very positive. The news reports, the comments at the T N T, uh the comments on, I think it was either Comor or King Five News, were, for the most part, I found positive in support of it. And then I got a text over the weekend, a picture from a constituent here in Lakewood, and he said there was someone with a hammock at the bus stop in front of City Hall. And to me, that's exhibit A as to why we're doing what we're doing, because this kind of stuff cannot happen. It just cannot happen. It precludes people from using public transit. It scares people away from using, you know, the bus stop and also other public amenities that we all pay for as taxpayers, and so I'm pleased that we have taken some steps in that direction to avoid knucklehead activity like that, because that, to me, is not someone who has to be there, it's someone who wants to be there. So enough said. Uh on the cops discussion, just so you're in the know, I received a late afternoon email uh from Ms. Grimley asking if I would contact a T N T reporter by the name of Peter Talbot, who was inquiring about whether or not Lakewood, like Pierce County apparently, uh or the Sheriff's Department, was willing or interested in signing on uh for more episodes of cops that is going to be sort of reinvigorated. And I said, uh, probably not. My humble opinion, based upon our discussion back in two thousand thirteen, was that it was really kind of a challenge for the city to overcome the stigma and the perception of the public safety issues, even though the reality was we'd made great strides forward. Tonight is no exception. I mean, hopefully, the public will glean that information from a very, very positive uh quarterly report from our police department that we are working really well to reduce crime, uh thanks to the staff and thanks to the leadership of Mr. Coughfield and his executive leadership team. So good work is happening. In my humble opinion, I told him I'd bring it back to council, because I don't make these decisions in a vacuum. I said, it was, if it was up to me, I'd say not no, but heck no, but I would bring it back. I don't think we want to revisit that opportunity.
We're still trying to dismiss the ones that were here before.
I appreciate that. So I just, yeah, in all fairness, I told Mr. Talbot that I would, you know, I would bring it up and see if there was any consensus, so I appreciate your feedback feedback on that. And um speaking of the T N T, I got word tonight that Matt Driscoll passed away unexpectedly at the age of forty-three from a heart attack. So as I was sitting here tonight, I got a text from a few friends on that, very, very sad. So I may work on sending out a a little sympathy card on behalf of of all of us to his family. I think that would be appropriate. And then on the Interlock and Bridge, we heard from the Mr. Coughfield that they're working to make repairs. I continue to receive feedback from neighbors in the area that would like to have the conversation about options. And so what I did was to encourage them to assemble a National Night Out neighborhood meeting, and they are doing that. It's on the list, so if any of you can make it, they would love to say hello. Uh it'll be on the list, and Ms. Schumark will have the address there, but if you have a chance, uh they would really appreciate seeing you and hearing from you. Speaking of National Night Out on August fifth, the next Monday meeting, I will not be here. I'm leaving on a two-week um trip overseas. I will be at the next meeting, so I'm only missing one meeting, that being August fifth, because the twenty-ninth of July is our fifth Monday. There's no meeting, so August fifth will be the only one I'll miss. And then finally, uh just to give you a heads up on the little personal employment thing, I was recruited and accepted the position to be the city attorney for the city of Auburn, starting on August sixteenth. It won't impact my role or position here in Lakewood. Uh there are some meeting, you know, uh juggling to to be had. And I know we're gonna chat about meetings uh down the road, whether we can consolidate some of our study sessions into one evening where we have maybe three meetings a month instead of four, so just more to follow on that, but I wanted to let you know. So you heard it from me and not, you know, on the media. So without any other uh comments or alibis for the good of the order, thanks to staff for a good evening, good reports. We're adjourned.